Okay, Mayor. We're all set.
Okay. Great, thank you. Art.
My name's Art Seating. I moved to the city of Lapeer in September of 1977 and have never left. In 1979, I became a member of the Lapeer Optimists Club. I was an original member of the City of Lapeer DVA. I was on the TIFFa board for around 30 years. In fact, my name is on a plaque at the community center, of which the TIFFa paid the debt service on that in excess of $15 million. I was elected to the Lapeer Community Schools Board of Education twice. Currently, I'm the chairman of the LDFA. I've served on it for 30 years or so. In other words, I've been around. I'm pleased to say that all these years, the Service Clubs, schools, Parks Department, the city, and the various tax capture authorities have worked together very well. Lots of projects to improve the lives of city residents have been accomplished. These include, but are not limited to, construction of the community center, which was first proposed during the 1990-1991 fiscal year, cleanup of the Oakdale property that was acquired by the city of Lapeer from the state. This included the demolition of the state hospital and the destruction of the old steam tunnels and hazardous waste mitigation, construction of the Optimus soccer fields, train depot site improvements and preservations, $100,000 bucks to the 9/11 Central Dispatch Authority, linear park development in Roden Park, partial purchases of fire trucks in both 2009 and 1992, Center Building Park leave lock reconstruction. Unfortunately, that's not lasted, well, it's lasted a long time, but 20 years it goes away. Artificial turf and major improvements to the Lapeer High football field, the reconstruction of the American Legion parking lot, water main extensions, the DeMille-Milville Road construction, millions of dollars in street and sidewalk construction, reconstruction and improvements throughout the city, the Kiwanis Bridge over Farmer's Creek in Anwick Park, the Pocket Park next to the Pick Spear headed by the Rotary Club, letting the Optimus Club use the Cedar Street Mall and the parking lot behind it in Lapeer Day activities, the Optimus tennis courts at CFI used to be Lapeer West. These are some of the examples of how the interested parties have all worked together for the greater good of the city. Some of the projects are supplemented by matching funds and/or grants by various governmental agencies. Those would not have happened if we had not had the matching funds. Oh, I forgot one major project. Over the last two years, the LDFA has paid $600,000 for new fire trucks. These trucks are not located in that developmental district, but the authority members felt that the businesses located in the LDFA Development District would benefit from their purchases, as would the businesses and the residents as a whole. I suspect that the current TIFFa members felt the same way about the proposed Kiwanis Club playground at Roden Park. As a city resident, I know that's how I feel. Thank you for your time and your attention. And I see I'm actually on the agenda later, so I should probably stick around.
Yes, please. Nancy didn't tell you, huh?
No.
I should have mentioned it myself.
Uh-huh, well.
All right. I'm glad you're here, thank you. Next, Ben.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ben Cummings. I am a multiple business owner, and I am very grateful to be able to serve the community as the coordinator for our Lapeer County Collaborative. So I'm a business owner and a civil servant here. I have been asked by the Kiwanis to bring my most persuasive arguments as to why you should support this project by passing through the allocated funds from TIFFa to Parks. First of all, it's smart. Big brain energy because of ROI, return on investment. The nearest inclusive park is in Port Huron, so folks are going to come from the entire region. They're going to eat at our restaurants, buy gas, shop at stores. Those businesses employ local people who pay local taxes. The status of the city of Lapeer rises. People will look to you for leadership. Another persuasive argument, it's easy. A lot of what you guys do is very, very difficult, and this one is not. It's very easy. All you have to do is pass through the funds from TIFFa to Parks, and that's something, as Art alluded to, you do every single year. For example, the community center gets this passed through TIFFa to Parks every single year, always has. For us, this is not a small amount of money. This will take us from $650 to $850. You don't have to make any hard choices to cut something. You just simply vote to pass it through. Your work is often difficult. This one is easy. I know you're not allowed to respond to me here, but in your closing statements today, I think we would all appreciate any reasons stated plainly that you might stand in the way of this. Kiwanis members abstained, recused themselves, whatever you want to say, from the vote to ensure no conflict of interest, and all of the remaining members of that TIFFa board voted unanimously to fund this very worthy and exceptionally well-organized and funded playground project. There is so much goodwill and momentum around this project. The contractors have locked in the low rate. The whole community is behind it. Lapeer County Community Foundation, the Optimists, Choice One, McLaren, View Newspaper Group, et cetera. Let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a public comment at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ann Zettel. My address is 714 Liberty Street, Lapeer. I've been a resident of Lapeer for 36 years. I'd like to thank the many Kiwanis, their family, their friends, everyone in their lives who sacrificed for the time away from their regular lives to support our community. And as Arthur mentioned, all of the things that he's involved in, many of us hold multiple duty, and so, of course, we overlap in our efforts to support the community. I would like to especially support the all-inclusive playground. I'm not only a resident of Lapeer, Michigan, for 36 years, but I'm also the executive director of Lapeer Teamwork. We are an employment service with special attention to individuals with disabilities. I'm here to support the TIFFa allocation of $200,000 for this playground, and I hope, as Mr. Cummings mentioned, that in the comments, if you do have opposition and you mention it later, then we can address that more clearly. Individuals with disabilities, lack of voice, many times in our society. But I'd like to remind you, children with disabilities, they are children, they are brothers and sisters, they are friends, they are neighbors, and they are children of God. I hope you would support this project.
Thank you. Anybody else? Chris?
Yeah. I wish I had more time. To Chris Turner with Crank for a Cause, and I also own the bike shop, Crank Cycle and Fitness here in Lapeer. Again, Crank for a Cause is a nonprofit that I actually have developed to assist not only the city but Lapeer County, and I have an army of volunteers that volunteer for us every year for the Oakdale Trails and actually our Yor- Yor Fund, our youth outdoor recreation fund that we've developed. Everybody's been talking about teams and how teams should operate. I know I've worked with both of the chiefs now on the Fire Department and Lapeer City to get certain projects done, and the efforts that, let me go back, I mean, I'm 53 years old, I've lived here my whole life. So do I live in the city? No. Do I care about the city? Absolutely. Because our city can be great, and we need to build these parks. The reason we put so much hard work in volunteerism, that's where I don't think a lot of people understand in the room, that the amount of volunteer work, the blood, sweat, and tears that Kiwanis puts into so many projects every single year, how many things do they do for the city to help raise money, help raise money for our kids? There's a lot of nonprofits in this town that are trying to raise money for the youth and to try to put forth ideas. I know there's certain commissioners that feel like it's being forced to tell you where to put your money or where to spend the money. I don't think anyone at that point, I think we're trying to follow the avenues the best that we can. I know that there's been concerns, that we're all open to following those right avenues, but to try to set back what Kiwanis has done with this all-inclusive park or to reallocate funds instead of getting those funds to that project and letting that move forth would be very disappointing, to say the least. So to try to get, I mean, that's coming from Crank for a Cause and our volunteers, I really hope that you guys can move that forward and help them get this project done, because I know what it takes to get to where they're at to make that kind of money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, you will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting if you wish to speak at that time.
Dear Heavenly Father, I invite your Holy Spirit here. Lord, we need you. Every person that you've created needs you. We thank you for being the good, good Father that you are. We ask that you fill this room with your knowledge and wisdom. Lord, that you speak to each heart here. We're grateful for every person that you brought to this room tonight, for their hearts, their concerns, their desires. Lord, we ask that you give extra understanding and wisdom to those that need to understand whatever it is that needs to be worked out. Lord, you have ordained all of us for such a time as this. Thank you for so many that love our community, so many that volunteer their time because they love our community. Thank you for your hand of protection on our community. I pray that you continue with that, help to lead us to make decisions that are wise and lasting and impactful. Be with us through the rest of this evening. Thank you for your protection over the fire the other day and those in it. Thank you that our first responders run to danger and protect us. I ask all these things in your precious Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, for the consent agenda. Somebody want to?
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the consent agenda for May 5, 2025. Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Glishman and supported by Commissioner Swindell. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. That motion's carried. Now, for the bill listing.
Close of my turn. Madam Mayor.
Please.
Motion to approve the bill listing for May 5, 2025 in the amount of $218,808.17.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. There's a discussion regarding the bill listing. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, oh, we'll call. Look, please.
Commissioner Brady?
I'm on the roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Glishman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petry?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Well, now I have a few certificates of appreciation. And so, first, Art Seating, would you like to come up, please?
No, I wouldn't.
So, so, Dr. G, take your position. Thank you.
So my wife was so close to pass on the word, huh?
I thought so, but I'm going to show God.
Well, she doesn't like being my administrative assistant.
Oh, I'll remember that.
Yeah, well, I don't really give any trouble with saying.
I won't talk. Okay. So, the city of Lapeer, this is a certificate of appreciation for Art Seating, whereas the city of Lapeer recognizes and appreciates the service of Art Seating as a member of the Economic Development Corporation, Tax Increment Finance Authority, and Groundfield Redevelopment Authority, and whereas Art has served on the Economic Development Corporation, Tax Increment Finance Authority, Groundfield Redevelopment Authority for many years and has contributed valuable time, effort, and expertise to the board. And whereas Art took an oath and gave conscientious, responsible, and professional service to serve the citizens of, to serve the citizens of the city of Lapeer during his time on the Economic Development Corporation, Tax Increment Finance Authority, and Groundfield Redevelopment Authority, and whereas Art's contributions to the Economic Development, the Finance Authority, and Groundfield have been invaluable, and their commitment to the community will be greatly missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lapeer City Commission does hereby proclaim Art Seating as a valued and respected member of the Economic Development Corporation, Tax Increment Finance Authority, Groundfield Redevelopment Authority. Boy, you have a lot of jobs. And it expresses its sincere appreciation for the dedication, service, and significant contributions to our community, dated today and signed. We very much appreciate everything you did for us, Art. 30-plus years, something like that.
Yeah. Lastly, I was able to work in Lapeer, and, you know, I worked three miles away, so it worked wonderful. And I had a very supportive wife, and anyway, it worked out nice. I had the time, I could do it, so.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
And I also have one for Bob Rudin Jr., who could not be here this evening, he contacted me. Same thing, he served on the Economic Development Corporation, Tax Increment Finance Authority, and the Groundfield Redevelopment Authority for several years as well, and just stepped down. So we thank him very much, and we'll make sure that he gets the certificate. So this was dated today as well and signed. Next, Catherine. Please come up. This is pretty awesome that I get to say thank you to everybody that served up for me. So, well, the City of Lapeer Certificate of Appreciation for Catherine Bostic Tullius, whereas the city of Lapeer recognizes and appreciates the service of Catherine Bostic Tullius as a member of the zoning board of appeals, and whereas Catherine has served on the zoning board of appeals since December 2020 and has contributed valuable time, effort, and expertise to the board, and whereas Catherine took an oath and gave conscientious, responsible, and professional service to serve the citizens of the city of Lapeer during her time on the zoning board of appeals, and whereas Catherine's contributions to the zoning board and zoning board of appeals have been invaluable, and their commitment and her commitment to the community will be greatly missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lapeer City Commission does hereby proclaim Catherine Bostic Tullius as a valuable, valued and respected member of the zoning board of appeals and expresses its sincere appreciation for their dedication, service, and significant contributions to our community, dated today and signed by all of us. Thank you very much. And last but not least is for Paul Parr, who could not be here this evening, and he also served on the zoning board of appeals for many years. So we were grateful, very grateful for his service as well, and we wish him well and hope we'll still see him around the city volunteering. So, those who get me up, I'm not giving you this, I guess. All right, now we need to, for administrative reports, set a public hearing for the 25-26 budget, fee schedule, and capital improvement plan. Somebody like to make a motion? Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to approve setting the public hearing on May 19, 2025 at 6:30 p.m. or assume thereafter is may be heard regarding fiscal year 25-26, City of Lapeer budget, and the first year of the proposed 2026 to 2031 capital improvement plan and fee schedule.
And is there support? So motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Petry. Is there any discussion regarding this motion, set in public hearing? Okay. Hearing none, then? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? That motion is carried. The next one is an application for the 2025 fireworks, and you had all the information in your packet.
May.
Commissioner Glishman?
I move to approve the 2025 application for fireworks and the 2025 permit for fireworks submitted by Ace Hyrow and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign unnecessary documents.
Motion was made by Commissioner Glishman and supported by Commissioner Petry. Is there discussion on this one? Hearing?
Are you with a support? Thank you.
No, no. Yeah, yeah, that's.
So, Madam Mayor, I do have a question before you take your votes. This is obviously for the July fireworks, but something hold on the 4th this year. Do we have a date?
It's the, yes, it was on the 12th, July 12th, and then the rain check date is July 13th. And that's from the company that they, I think, first were with last year, but there's so many cities and towns, you know, that are doing fireworks on the 4th, and very few companies with these credentials are able to do it, so I guess we get to have two parties, one on the 4th and one on the 12th, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, then we will switch the information to the city manager.
And the resident.
Oh, yeah, right, correct. All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? That motion's carried. Okay, now we're going to switch that information that's on the city attorney's agenda to you, Mr. Womack.
Thank you. So, not much here. I just did a couple of discussion items. Spring Expo, which we were at with the chamber, I had a great time. I thought we had a lot of people stop by and chat with us. We have a board full of ideas and suggestions, which we're going to revisit in our joint meeting that's coming up, which just happens to be the next item. But I had a great time at the Spring Expo, and I wanted to ask the commission members if they had any thoughts that they want to share about the Spring Expo.
I had a good time. Met a lot of people.
Yeah, I guess, do you guys want to try doing that again? We had just about everybody show up, but I thought we had a great interaction with the public.
I think it's well worth it myself. This is the first time that the city has, except excluding the Fire Department and the place, I've been there for years, but for, in the city hall, and it was nice to be able to talk to the public, get some ideas. We were there for concerns, so it would be nice to have that presence there, maybe they'll get to know that and talk. But I was able to talk to a lot of people.
I think the good thing is that not a lot of people come to our meetings, so they don't actually know who we are, and not that we actually watch the video either. So I think it gave the people an opportunity to see the faces and to interact with us. So I liked it very much, and I think it's a worthy project to continue.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay, then the next thing is the joint meeting, which is a meeting that we have with all of our boards. You know, Ms. Hannah, I forgot to invite the LDFA board, I'm going to invite them. We're trying to add in all the boards this year, but it's a meeting that we hold on June 11th. I believe that's at 5:30? Okay, 5:30. I think we're going to hold it over at the Rec Center again this year. I think we have capacity for 75 seats over there. I think last year we had 20 or 30 people, so we should have plenty of room. But it's open to the public. It's a lot of visioning, talking about the future of the community, things that the public thinks we should work on or whatever else. So a great opportunity to meet with the city hall staff and elected officials. So any thoughts, questions, or concerns about that from the board?
No.
Okay, that's all I have for our report. Thank you.
Okay. Our city attorney's report.
Nothing, sir, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, under unfinished business, this is for the commission departments, so you have somebody to appoint underneath. I was thinking I got to do it, but you get to do it.
We better do it.
Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to appoint Brian Cotier to the zoning board of appeals through April 1st, 2028. Second?
Okay. Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Glishman. Any discussion?
Does it take immediate effect? So do we have an empty spot on the board?
Yes. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no? Welcome, Brian. You're now on the zoning board. Okay, and that's the only appointment for tonight. Okay, and then in your packet, there was all the department communications for you to read, and we're back to public comments. Would anybody like to make a public comment at this time?
I'm in.
All right, fine.
Good evening. Actually, this evening, I'm going to wear a different hat than resident. Some of you know that I sit on the foundation board for the Four County Community Foundation. I can't speak to what's going on behind the scenes about the park issue, but I can share with you that it has drawn the attention of many different organizations, including the Four County Community Foundation, and if we didn't believe in it, we wouldn't have put some of our own money into this project. And I say this because it's technically outside of our service area for the Four County Community Foundation, but because we felt so compelled that it was such a worthy cause, it brings people together from all walks of life, we too felt that it was an important project here in the city, and we put our money behind that as well. So we hope that whatever the issue is that seems to be happening here, we can put that behind us and move forward in a positive way to do what's right for this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, we can go on to commissioner's comments. Commissioner Swindell, I'm going to switch it up and start with you.
Thank you all for coming. I love it when people come to the meetings. I love it when they come and tell us what they think, because otherwise, we don't know. Often, nobody tells us, so I'm glad that you came and told us what you thought. I certainly support all of, everyone in the room's endeavors and all of the wonderful things that all of your wonderful clubs have brought to the city for ever, since I can remember, anyway, since I was a kid. All of your names have been plastered all over everything nice we have here in the city, and you are appreciated, and I support you fully all of the time. It is nice out, and the car show did start, and I did walk downtown with my husband and the dogs beforehand, and it's nice to see people outside again. Spring has finally, the weather has finally broken, and it's nice to see people out and about. Watch out for children, watch out for adults on bicycles, share the road. Some people don't think that bikes should belong on roads and say mean things to them and honk at them and yell at them, and just know to share the road and watch for kids. There's no reason to get where you need to be faster, and school buses. I personally have seen twice in the last 10 days, people just blow by a school bus with the red lights on. So pass it along, tell everyone you know. Keep the kids safe, and thank you all for doing what you do.
Commissioner Petry?
I'm going to start out with thanking WMPC for sponsoring the National Day Prayer last Thursday. Was at the Pickstheater. We had, I thought, a great turnout. We had, I thought, a great turnout. Senator Daley was there, many pastors from the area. We had a former American Idol contestant who was in the top 12 come and sing, so that was beautiful. And the whole atmosphere was overwhelmingly warm and so appreciated. I wanted to ask more about Bike Night, like where we are with it. Are we going to have food trucks? We kind of left that waiting to hear. I just wanted to know where we're at with that and what will be happening with Bike Night.
We can check on it. Have a report on that this evening.
And then the emergency plan again, still wanting to go there. I wanted to tell the Kiwanis and the Optimists and every, every organization that contributes to our community, all of the organizations and individuals who volunteer, I appreciate all of your hard work, everything that you give to the community. I simply was elected to monitor tax dollars. And so being one of the new commissioners, I've been here about a year and a half, not quite. I'm still learning all that we're doing. And from my understanding, the Tifa areas, that money goes to that Tifa area. Now, as far as telling you how I will vote on that, I'm not prepared to give you that answer because I'm putting much thought and prayer behind my decision, as I do with every single packet that I go over and vote on here. It's really important, it's an important position that I was elected to, I take it seriously. I appreciate all that they want to do. I want the inclusive park. I, I'm watching funds be raised for it, I'm hoping they'll continue to be raised for it. I have nothing against it. I want to make sure that I'm spending tax dollars responsibly and that that's how the taxpayers want it spent too. So, just so that's very clear, I am not against an inclusive park or anything. I want to make sure that we are putting the money where it's supposed to go, where the taxpayers are wanting us to put it. So that isn't just my decision, I'm one vote. And like I said, I'm not prepared to tell you how I'll vote because I haven't made that decision yet. I'm listening and watching and still learning. So I'm very grateful that each of you came to tell us how you feel. I think it's important that you share with us how we're doing, what we're doing, how you'd like it done, what you don't like done. Big items like this or items about your leaves or snow removal or whatever, that's what we're here for. So I'm, I'm happy to listen and, and take in the information and then I will decide my vote. I won't tonight, so I'm sorry to disappoint you. I wanted to end my, my comments with saying how grateful I am this Mother's Day. I brought my first daughter home on Mother's Day and her birthday actually falls on Mother's Day. And this year more than any other, I'm so grateful I get to celebrate it on the birthday with her. So I wore the butterfly shirt because it has deep meaning and she loves butterflies and I get to celebrate that she's here and alive this year on her birthday. And that I'm still getting to celebrate with my mom, who will be 97. So all those who still have their mom, we are very, very blessed. And those who don't, say a prayer for your hearts because it's a huge loss to not have them. So Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers of children and pets and, sorry, whatever.
Commissioner Brady?
I took some notes. I also drank probably too much caffeine today, so I'm going to try to not be irritable. Putting on my, I'm going to just smile, that'll work. This is, this is somewhat related, but probably unrelated also. Things that I'm thinking about up here are policy matters, not personnel and not personal. I just want to make sure that that's as clear as I can be. I'm just looking, I probably spend more time looking at a spreadsheet of numbers than I did thinking about any of you folks. Okay, so just, that's all, that's where my mind is coming from, that's all I'm worried about. I don't necessarily see this as a setback for the Kiwanis unless they were counting on this money from the outset. So unless, unless we're going to argue that they went into the intention of the project thinking that this money was there for them immediately, then I don't, this, this isn't necessarily a setback to me. I strongly encourage them to keep going. I, I support the project, just not using the funds in this way. I, I will sit in the dunk tank. Ben, I will sit in the dunk tank and we'll probably raise a bunch of money for it that time, because.
Three days, right?
Not today, no.
No, three days.
Three days. I'll sit in the dunk tank to raise money for this project. I'm more than happy to do that. Okay, so please take me up on that offer, that's a serious offer.
That's too great, maybe.
Yeah. I think that the Tifa has very specific projects listed in its project plan. They're, they're, this is light of, the closest I can find in the Tifa III project is Project H and it specifically outlines projects that are in the Oakdale property, the American Legion field, and it also says other city-owned projects and I just don't know, it's a bit of a stretch to me to go across town. It's a mile from the Tifa district to get to Roden Park. I think that it also requires that there's a direct benefit to the Tifa III. And I, as a resident of the Tifa III, don't see the direct economic benefit. I understand the argument that it will bring people in. I, put that on paper and show it to me and then we can talk about it. That would be, that would be what I'm looking for. And I'm honestly looking for whatever, like, but that, that onus is on you guys to do the work and to show me.
It's already been done.
Okay, well, you know, here I am sitting on the commission and I haven't seen it. And so there's going to be questions anytime. My number three is that I do not see Tifa as a charitable organization. I have a lot of respect for charitable organizations, I donate a lot of money and time to my church. I, I love that Kiwanis can get together and pool resources to do something like this. I think Optimus has done a lot of great things. I think the community foundation has done a lot of great things. The Tifa is a tax district, so you're specifically asking me to spend somebody else's tax dollars or my own tax dollars on the project. And I, that, that would be an obstacle that I would need to see some convincing arguments to overcome. And then my fourth point would just be that, like, what's the limiting principle if we do this? Who's next? Can my church come to the Tifa board next and ask to build a new softball diamond?
Yeah.
I, I just think that there is. I understand that Kiwanis also went to the county and they were, they were not awarded any money from the county. So beyond the, you know, kind of somewhat odd happenstance of the process of how this whole one is coming through, those would be my reasons why I'm, I'm not planning on moving that money through the Parks Fund into the Kiwanis project. So I hope that was an answer, but I'm willing to continue the conversation. Thank you.
Well, I want everyone to know that I am not going to sit in the dunk tank. That needs to be clear. Okay, I haven't made up my mind yet about the Tifa money. I'm open to thinking about it and the reason it's so tough is you're asking for a very, very worthy cause and it pulls on the heartstrings of everybody. My concern is I want to make sure that we are following all the rules and in the past if they've kind of squeaked or wiggled the rules a little bit, that was some, that onus is on someone else. I want to make sure that we follow letter by letter the Tifa rules because I don't want to be sitting up here and get sued by the residents because misuse of money. So I just need to know the absolute truth about the rules. I appreciate everyone who came. It's always nice to see people and get your points of view. And it's always a big variety and everybody has something special on their mind, as I do. I have my projects that I would like to see with the city. And last year at our joint meeting where we had, I don't know how many people, but it was at the rec center, it was really nice. When we voted on the project, the project that I put on the board got the most dots, and dots are like stars. And it was to instigate a lilac festival, which is more than just putting on a festival because you have to have the lilacs. So I have developed an action plan on that and I hope that at our joint meeting on the 11th, I can have some people there who would be interested and would support the project because I did talk with Nita Payne and she is excited about it and knows that it can make a real benefit to the city of LaPire. And, and moving forward in the years, it'll probably be much greater than I can live that long to see. But I'm, I'm excited about this project myself. And I have talked to Rodney about it and Rodney supports me with this. So we just have to get the word out to everybody because it's going to be a volunteer thing. We need to have a lot of volunteers. And last, because I've talked long enough, I just want to wish our wonderful chief of police happy birthday. I'm done.
Do you want to give a comment regarding our tour at Pentier?
Oh, I would love to do that, I'm sorry. The mayor and I went to Pentier for a tour. I'm blown away by technology today. And the company has two buildings on Court Street and some of you are probably familiar with it, and they've outgrown it. And they really need to find a new space, a bigger building, and of course we want them to stay in the city. It's a lot of tax dollars if they leave that we would lose. So they, they need to have our support in finding a bigger facility, preferably taking the two buildings and get all of their production into one larger building, it would be, it would be just easier for them. But it was a wonderful experience. I love to, to tour all the factories because I learn something all the time.
Thank you. So I guess at the start I'll echo Commissioner Swindell's comments that it's so awesome to see people out and about. Weather was nice today, there's at least 80 nice cars out there for you to go check out. Immediately before the meeting, I was over at Roden Park checking out the new garden areas that Mr. Church was able to get grant funded. So that's always awesome. And there were kids out there playing baseball and a whole bunch of people walking around, I just love it. It's like Jim probably left, but the DDA events, there's all sorts of stuff starting this week, including the car show tonight. I believe food trucks are coming up shortly, Friday, Saturday, sometime soon. Monday? Okay, I was off, probably a couple of days. Monday, so I love that. It's one of my favorite events here in the city. Super important, we're going to be repaving part of Nepesin Road, that's the road right out here in front of City Hall, in between the M24 and I believe it's Mason Street, which is one street up. That's going to start on May 7th, originally scheduled for May 8th. We're going to get it done one day early to hopefully be done in time for Women's Night Out. I'd also like to thank the LDFA, they approved their budget today at about 5 o'clock. I was going to anonymously wish two of my staff people happy birthdays today, but Chief, happy birthday. You already got your present, don't expect anything else from me. I had a meeting with County Administrator Moses Sanzo and Mr. Jim Alt, about a week and a half back now. We're primarily talking about the parking that's around the county building and also to see about making some pedestrian crossings a little bit safer out there because there's an awful lot of activity at that courthouse. We want to make sure that people are safe while they walk around the area. Also, there's continuing work on parking lot number five. As you guys probably have noticed, we did not pave certain areas of parking lot number five when we did the repaving. And that project is going to be, I guess, green space, additional parkland out there. Mr. Church, has that re, planted trees recently?
We planted trees on the south side of the park side.
So we, we got rid of those trees that dropped those sticky roots all over the asphalt path and we're beating up the asphalt path with the roots and we're replacing some new trees recently, which is great because that was one of the top comments from the expos, people want some more trees here in the community. Also want to welcome some of our new employees. We had HR person start this week. She's a former employee of the city, so she's coming back to us, which is awesome. She'll be replacing, obviously, Ms. Russell, who will be retiring soon. Can't believe I have to say that. We have a new DGW employee starting, we have a new police officer starting, those are all great pickups for the city. I look at the Bike Nights, the emergency plan is sitting on my desk, I just have to look through it and see what we can and cannot release. And finally, I would comment that my favorite picture from my seven years in Cedar Springs was me in the dunk tank. The difference is, the difference is, their festival is in October. So that was a cold dunk day for me, but I got to smack talk a little bit to the starting pitcher for the girls' softball team and she missed her first four throws. Did not miss a fifth throw. Anyways, that's all, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it was Thursday, I believe, at the tour for Pentier Group, Wednesday or Thursday. And it was fascinating. Now, I was just, how many times have we drive by a company, one Court Street, De Mill? Thinking, oh, they're automotive. Well, we got a lot of the different buildings or different businesses around here are automotive. But this one's a little bit different. This one, this company makes, I don't want to say this wrong, their equipment so that a particular business can make that, their product. So they'll, they'll set up and design everything and this project might take them six to eight months for each particular business. And then that project is done, they give it to the company that requested it and then they get bids constantly. And so that's part of the problem is that they, because of all the business that is coming in, they don't have enough space in the two buildings. And it's hard to manage two buildings, takes up a lot more time for all the managers involved, for the owners involved. So, but it was, it was very, very nice.
They were elbow to elbow though, really.
Yeah, they are. Of course, there's some, yeah, it's just very awesome. So, anyway, I would like to thank our fire department and police department. You were out there fighting a brush fire over by Myers on last week, April 29th, I think. And also, there was a 12, 12-year-old suspect who maybe started the fire. Well, that's, you know, under investigation, I'm sure, but, you know, kids can get into things. So we have to really keep an open eye, especially when it, have all the brush that we do have in various fields, so. But I wanted to thank the fire department for taking care of that. And then also, I mean, you're out, I hear the talk out a lot, but the police and fire department responded to a small fire at apartment building last week, which was north of the rec center. And one person had to be taken to the hospital, I hope that they're okay, had to be taken for burns. And one police officer, I believe, was under observation for smoke and breathing in smoke. So I hope they're okay too, right now. This is out of the city, but, you know, we travel around the city and then go out a little bit, but there will be construction starting May 12th through the 17th off of, in my city, road, basically. They'll be closing the railroad tracks on Wilder Road, so if you want to go that way, don't. And then, oh, we also had notice on our employees going that extra mile in repairing various things at our rec center, saving us a lot of money when they can do so versus a company. There was a company that was going to be able to fix something and after buying the equipment, the staff thought that they could take care of it themselves. Rodney, how much did you, they save? Like $8,000 or something? All those little things add up a lot in our budget, so very much appreciated. And some of you might have received something from DTE. There is a new program on their website that you can go in and you put in your zip code and it'll tell you the different areas of where the power improvements are, a map. And also you compare your. areas of where the power improvements are, a map, and also, you compare your showcasing for year-over-year reliability performance. So, you can go back and say, okay, 2024, 2023, I had to pay this much, or use this much versus now, so. Anyway, our area representative sent this to me, Mike Sage, so I just thought I'd pass it on. Check it out on the DTE website. Again, like Jim Alt had mentioned, Heart and Soul will be tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock at the Dog House Coffee Shop. And with that, there is no further business, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.